Can everybody hear me? Anybody?
I can hear you.
I can hear you.
Oh, great, great. Thank you. I'll make sure that we can... Where are you today, Bob?
Pretty darn good. Yourself?
Doing all right. Nice northern lights. And you can see my screen now?
Yeah. No, I just lost it. Oh, here it is.
So we got four members so far.
Hey, Eric. It's Anthony.
What's up, Anthony?
Are we, um, we're not doing the continued public hearing for Summerhays, correct?
Right.
Okay, that got pulled. I just wanted to make sure. I just, oh, I could not. Now I see it. I just wanted to double check.
That's fine.
Thank you. I see a number here, 585-621-334. Who is that?
Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Um...
I thought that was...
I'm having phone issues, I think, but, um, this is Susan Leacy calling in, um, about the variance for the horses, um, on Johnson Road.
Great. Glad you could, uh, join us. We haven't started the meeting just yet, but...
Okay.
We can hear you nice and clearly, so that's good.
Okay, who's this?
This is Eric from the town.
Oh, hi, Eric.
All right, well, good evening, everyone. It's six o'clock. We'd like to start our May hearings for the Town of Canadaguas zoning board of appeals. It's our custom, and when we begin to start with the pledge of allegiance, maybe a little bit awkward with the format, but Eric has the flag there, and after that, we observe a brief moment of silence in honor of our servicemen and women. So if you'd please join with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
States of America.
Which stands. Our nation, our God, invisible. Thank you. As we begin tonight, I'd just like to remind everyone of a couple ground rules and of our purpose. Our purpose as the zoning board of appeals is to hear evidence from the applicant that is in addition and supplemental to their written applications, which are publicly available, as well as to hear a comment and, uh, receive additional information from the audience, from anyone in the public. The way in which we conduct the hearings is we'll begin with the applicant. At a certain point during the process, I will ask if there is anyone else in the audience, in this virtual audience, who would like to provide any additional information or ask any questions. At that point in time, we'll open the floor up. You will all be muted except for the person that has been recognized with the floor. So if you would like to speak, raise your hand virtually, and you have to do that in the bottom of your screen. There is a participants icon, and then when you click on that, it opens up the list of participants, and in the bottom of that window, there is a raise hand button. If you click that, it will raise your hand, and that's how we will know to call on you and give you the floor during the public comment portion of the hearing. After that, we'll go back to the applicant to see if they have anything additional to provide, and then we will close the hearing when the applicant is comfortable doing so. For all of our applicants, we have sixty-one days after we close a public hearing to render a decision. So when I ask if you want to close your public hearing, it's important because it starts that sixty-one day clock for us to render a decision. Plus, it also ends the public hearing for your application. At that point, we won't receive any additional information or comment from anyone, including the applicant. It's our custom to vote the same evening that we hear applications, but we do have the ability to wait if we feel we need to do so. Our deliberations, which we'll do at the end of all the public hearings, are open to the public in the sense that everyone can, uh, listen and watch and view those, but they're not open to the public in the sense that you can provide additional comment or information at that point once we begin our deliberations. So with that, we'll begin with our first new public hearing.
Can we just say for the record, the, uh, the continued public hearing for Summerhays, as it was on our agenda, was withdrawn by request of the applicant. I see Greg Sholand on the call. I believe he was here. But anyways, just so that's there.
All right, great, thank you. Well, we begin with property fifty-four eighty-nine Johnson Road. They're seeking an area variance to house animals in a structure eighty-six point five feet from the street line, when one hundred feet is the minimum required. The requested variance is thirteen point five feet. The property is within the AR two zoning district. Who will speak tonight for the applicant?
Um... I'm the applicant, but I don't know if I'm supposed to speak now or not.
This is Ms. Leacy. Is that how you pronounce it?
Leacy, yes. You may call me Susan.
Susan. Uh, yes, this is your opportunity to present your application to the board. If you have anyone that you would like to speak on your behalf, maybe an attorney, surveyor, engineer, whatever the case may be, you can do that, but we certainly would love to hear from you to better understand your application.
Well, I don't have any attorneys or engineers. Um, I believe some of the neighbors may have, um, wrote in or emailed in. They told me they did in support. Yeah, I purchased the property March twenty-fourth of this year with the understanding that horses were permitted. Um... You know, I guess that's my fault for not researching it further. I kind of took the word of the real estate agents, um... And, uh, I was looking forward to moving my horses to the neighborhood. Um, I know Helen Saxby across the street, and we were kind of excited about being able to ride together. So, um, yeah, I had no idea there was, like, um, a distance that the barn was required to be from the road. So here I am in the variance process, and, um... You know, I sold my house on Sted Hill to move down and be, um, in more of a community setting and, um, with my horses. So that's my hope that this will go through, through. Otherwise, I'll have to go to Plan B, which I don't know what it is yet. So, thank you for your time.
All right, Eric, can you put back up the, the site map? All right. So Susan, just walk us through this, uh, project. So your home and barn are already existing, correct?
Yes.
And so the barn, um, is, what is our number, Eric? Eighty-six point what? Was it in the public notice?
Uh-huh.
Half feet from the street?
Yes, apparently.
And so Eric, just explain for the board a little bit the issue of, uh, the need for the variance versus a pre-existing non-conformity.
Um, so because the property, or excuse me, because there is a change of use for it, it would be required to meet kind of what the new code is in this instance. So right now, it's used as a garage, let's say, or detached accessory building, which is available. It only needs to be sixty feet from the right-of-way to do that. Um... In this instance, once they change it into a barn, with the use changed, it then needs to be a hundred feet from the property line. So because they're changing the use, it requires it to come into conformance with that section of code. Although they aren't changing the, the structure of it, which is where we'll see it, we see these types of things many times because they're changing the use, it would need that.
All right, I just wanted to make sure that was clear. From the zoning law determination, you know, the project description says that the applicant proposes to house equids within an existing barn, but you're saying the determination was that it was not a barn, but a garage?
Yeah, that should probably have said an existing detached accessory building.
Yeah, it's called a frame barn in the, um... In the tax maps, um, that I have, but I guess, yeah, I guess I wasn't aware, though, it was called a garage by some people, so I don't know what it's supposed to be called.
Well, our code has different definitions for, like, barn, which is actually for the storage of livestock essentially, um, and for detached accessory buildings, which is not necessarily for, uh, for livestock, but more for, like, garages or something to that effect. So the, the word use does matter, but...
Yeah, I guess, I guess that's where, I guess maybe that's why the realtors were confused because the survey map, um, that was submitted to the Town of Canadaguas or filed with them says frame barn, so maybe that's why the realtors thought it was okay to have horses there.
Well, Susan, let me ask you a couple of questions. Um, this barn, where is the entrance going to be for your horses? Which side? Northeast, southwest?
It's gonna be on the, um, on the, um, I'm looking at the map now. North, more on the, um... Well, it's kind of crooked, so let me see. I guess it would be more on the east side.
Okay.
It's not gonna be, it's gonna be further away from the, the road for the smaller doors. I just had a contractor fix the doors. They were kind of like old and falling apart, so he fixed them and made them match the roof. They look nice. But, yeah, the horses will be, like, further away from the road in two little stalls, and then I was gonna fence in the back part of the property.
Okay. Do we have any questions from anyone on the board on this application?
Um, actually, I do, Terrence. Um... Uh, are there any other properties that have anything similar, you know, that we can compare it to?
Well, Helen Saxby across the street on Wells Curtis has two, her two horses there, and I think she told me she wrote a letter of support, and next door to her, um, on Wells Curtis, heading towards the lake, the next property is the Romano's. They have goats and chickens in their barn, and they, they were looking forward to having horses. And then I know further down Johnson Road, on the same side I'm on, I can't remember her name, but there's a girl named Vanessa with a, um, quite a lot of property, 'cause I kept my horses there like thirty years ago before I moved to Sted Hill, and I see she still has horses there. Um, so there's horses and, uh, in the right immediately within the neighborhood. And the people, um, next to me on Johnson Road, um, Bob and Maureen Lacrosse, they're from Virginia. They have a newer house, but they told me they liked horses, and they were hoping that, you know, I could bring them. It was fine with them. I think they wrote a letter.
I, I recall, I mean, I'm not, I don't live far from where you are, um, on, you know, at your location, but I'm familiar with the neighborhood. I know there's quite a few horses and animals out there, so... But I was just wondering if there was anything closer than, you know, what your existing garage slash barn is.
Um...
It looks like...
No, no, I'm sorry. I think Romano's barn is closer to the road, but maybe theirs was always, um, a barn and not a garage. I don't know.
Either way, theirs would still be considered a pre-existing non-conformity, or they may have gotten a variance. I haven't looked into their file.
All right, any other questions from the board on this application?
Uh, just a clarification. Um, you can hear me right now, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Um, the, uh, structure is unchanged. It's the, what changed was the usage. And, uh, so in other words, if you were putting cars in this structure, it would be okay, but they need a variance because they're using horses, or I mean, it would be horses.
Correct.
And used as a barn. Am I missing something, or is that the gist of, uh, what we're talking about?
That is correct.
Okay.
This is just, I'm trying to be...
Oops, I'm sorry. Um, does... Is there a limitation?
Go ahead, Kelly.
All right, is there a limitation to how many, um, how many animals you can keep in, like, per square footage, I would assume? So, I mean, from the size of it, I'm assuming there's only gonna be, like, a handful of horses, like a couple, right?
There is, based on acreage. It's, it's two for five acres. What is it, Eric?
I actually don't think there is any in town law. There may be in Ag and Markets or any other regulating body. There's some rules for, um, if you were having, like, a commercial horse boarding, you need a certain number of horses per acre, um, but not for just privately keeping horses on your property.
Um, well, it won't exceed two horses because I'm still actually planning on and am currently using the majority of the barn for a garage, um, as far as tractor, truck, lawnmower, that type of thing, and just planning on putting in two small ten-by-ten stalls with access to the pasture that doesn't exist yet.
Okay. Yeah, I was mistaken, Eric. I was remembering the, there is a horse provision, but it's not for this district. I think it's, like, SCR one and somewhere else.
Okay.
Um... Any other questions from the board?
Well, I guess, based on, if I'm hearing, um, Ms. Leacy correctly, you could still argue that this is a garage if the, if the majority of the building is being used for vehicles and the smaller part is being used for horses. I mean, it's definitely a mixed-use, uh, you know, structure.
Yeah, the, the code section is you gotta have a hundred feet to the property line between any structure housing animals.
Right, I got that.
So the, the relative magnitude of the use, whether it's a percentage expert cars versus horses, I don't think is determinative. It's whether it's a structure that houses animals. But I'm not the enforcement officer. Eric?
I think that your interpretation's correct, but I suppose it could be a, a reasoning factor or consideration for you guys when you're looking at it.
What other questions do we have from the board? All right. Hearing none, Ms. Leacy, we're gonna open this to public comment at this point. So if you have anything you would like to add on this application, go ahead and raise your hand. I see, um, Robert raised his hand, so Eric, if you would unmute Robert, I will recognize him. So just some general guidance, as we open up to the public, all of your comments need to be addressed to the board. This is not a forum for town residents to argue or, or debate between themselves. All that can happen outside of the public hearing. This is an opportunity for you to present evidence to the board. So keep the comments directed to the board. Uh, go ahead, Robert.
Uh, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, uh, Robert Lacrosse at fifty-four eighty-five Johnson Road. Uh, just to Susan's east side, uh, we will border her property on her new fence line. Uh, we, we actually don't have any problem with her horses, having horses. We've told her that we, uh, we like livestock, and that's why we moved to this rural area in Canadaguas. We've talked to her and, uh, said we didn't have any problem with it. I, um, only had a question about two things, and I think we can work it out. Is the, uh, the rule that says two hundred feet away from any property line, you'll pile manure? Uh, and, um, just having access to my property line on my west side of the property per east side where the fence will be?
All right, so Eric, the manure rule, that is two hundred feet, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So for everyone's benefit, you can go back to the map there, Eric? On encore, sorry, on encore.
Oops, sorry. Wrong one, this one.
Just draw us a line, a two-hundred-foot line roughly, uh, parallel to the barn from Mr. Lacrosse's property line. So we can get a distance.
Yeah.
So it's two-hundred-one basically to the barn, right?
Yep, roughly.
And then the line is narrowing from there, so certainly that code provision would need to be complied with.
And we don't have, uh, the Helen, the lady across the street that Susan mentioned, uh, her horses, uh, we'd never have a problem with them. The problem is prevailing wind comes from that side. It blows into my house, so that's the one thing our concern is really, honestly.
Well, just so you know, Ms. Lacrosse, that, that's a, an appropriate concern to raise. That issue is not in front of the board tonight because it hasn't yet, uh, come to fruition. It's not right for our consideration, but it is good for Ms. Leacy to, to hear that concern and know that, you know, down the road, if there were an issue, there could be a report of a code violation, and she would have to comply with that requirement.
Yep, we don't think there'll be any problem.
All right, excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other comments from anyone in, uh, the audience on this application? Once again, you'll want to, at the bottom of your Zoom screen, click Participants, which will open the Participants menu, and then click Raise Hand. Okay, seeing none, we'll go to our next step, which is, uh... Let's see, how many folks, Eric, do we have that are... let's see, how many folks, Eric, do we have that are only audio?
Uh, just Susan, I believe.
Susan. Okay. So we should be good then. All right. Um, Susan, is there anything in addition you would like to add on your application?
Um, I don't think so. Um, but, um, yeah, I just, I don't know if it's appropriate to comment now because it wasn't, um, but yeah, I would be, I'm really good with the manure pile and tilling it in or spreading it or getting rid of it. I don't like piles either attract flies. Just, you know, for all the neighbors concerned too.
Okay. Well, with that then, Ms. Lacy, are you comfortable closing your application, understanding that that will close the public hearing portion of our evening and that we will then move towards deliberations, but have 61 days to render a decision?
Yep. I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. Very good. Well, with that, we will close. Our next public hearing is for property located at 3312 Fallbrook Park. The request is for an area variance or building coverage. The request is 35.2% when 25% is the maximum within the RLD district. So it's a 10.2% variance. Anthony, are you going to address this application for us?
Um, uh, yeah, there is a, there's a group of, um, there's a team in place. And I think the first, the first person that's going to step up and do a little bit of a presentation is, um, Pete Heinzelman, the architect, to kind of go through the design and where we're at with the design and how we came to the, to, to the structure that we're at now. So, um, Pete, if you're there, why don't you start in?
Yeah, yeah. Good night. I mean, good evening, everyone. How's, how's everyone tonight?
We're well.
Wonderful. Um, yeah. So we're here to kind of discuss 3312 in, um, the building coverage variance that we are requesting. Um, so what we'll do, like, like Anthony said, tonight we've got myself online. Uh, we also have the owners, Kelly and Rick, uh, Kelly Vestal and Rick Quail on the, um, online as well. Anthony Menenzia and Sue Steele are landscape architects. So, um, hopefully we can answer any questions that anyone has and, um, come to a resolution tonight. Um, Eric, if you would, please, um, click over to the next slide. Thank you. Um, this is a slide showing the existing conditions of what, um, Rick and Kelly, um, our clients purchased in, uh, early, or I mean, actually in October of 2019. Um, the existing conditions on this Fallbrook property are quite unique to, um, I would say to, to many of the existing, um, existing lots. I mean, one, yes, it's, it's non-conforming like most of the properties that are on Fallbrook, but the non-conformities are rather larger and, uh, they're pretty interesting. So when we look at the site, if you look at where, uh, my bubble number one is shown, this existing structure is actually a foot over the property line to the north. Um, and the rest of the house is actually pretty much right on the property line, uh, on that northern side yard setback property line. We are also five feet from the right of way. So it's, it's very close to the Fallbrook Street. Um, there is a swimming pool that is on the lakeside, uh, in between the house and Canadega Lake, which again is a non-conformity. And we have an extremely large percentage of lot coverage being existing 58.7% that is covered, uh, right now with either building or, um, some sort of a, uh, impervious pavement pool, that type of a thing. Um, now to go back, when, when Rick and Kelly, they did purchase this property, um, with the intent to move, um, to Fallbrook as their primary residence. Um, Kelly actually grew up here on the Fallbrook neighborhood for most of her life. Her parents had property here. Um, so she's kind of looking to go back home is one of the reasons why they did this. And Eric, if you would, please, um, click to the next slide. When they purchased this house, they were actually looking to do a renovation in a small addition to it. Um, thinking that they'd be able to, to figure it out and, um, and, and make something like that work. What we found when we started to tear into the house and really understand what was actually there is a pretty structurally unsound project, uh, something that would be much, much more time, much, much more money, um, to build out in the way that they wanted to and that they seemed or deemed fit to live in as their primary residence and be a part of the Canadega Lake and Fallbrook neighborhood. Um, again, the house position on the site is, um, not ideal for, for them or for any of their neighbors. And the swimming pool, the landscaping and the proximity of the road were all things that we ended up, um, considering before we decided to, um, go in and do a raising rebuild for this property. So there was a lot of consideration and a lot of time before we even decided to go and do this raising rebuild and, and propose to build a new house. Um, so now if you can please click to the next slide, Eric. This is a slide now showing our proposed site conditions. Um, so what we are proposing to do is create a single-family home with an attached two-car garage. We are moving the house off of the northern property line. Uh, we are moving the house off, also off of the roadside Fallbrook property line while still maintaining, um, good clearance on the lakeside and really making sure that we take into account where the neighbors' houses are and their view sheds and kind of the, the overall feel of Fallbrook neighborhood in terms of the lakeside. And we're trying to add in as much green space as we possibly can. Um, so we are reducing our lot coverage, uh, from the existing number of 58.7 down to 52.8. We are increasing our roadside setback by almost 18 feet. And we are increasing our side yard setback, um, on the north to, to, uh, relieve some of that, um, tightness between the two structures. Uh, Eric, would you please, uh, click to the next one? Now, when we designed this house, um, this, this is, again, this will be Kelly Vestal and Rick Quail's primary residence. Um, they are selling their home in Chicago to move to the Canadega area, um, for, for the remainder. And they have, are the two permanent residents and they also have a lot of visiting family and visiting friends. Um, one thing that we wanted to make sure we did with this house is design it in terms of aging in place. And I'm not sure how many of you understand the idea of aging in place, but it's, it's a way that we design a house so that it functions now and in the future, um, as the needs and the abilities of our owners, or the owners start to change. Um, and that being unfortunately, none of us are getting any younger in our days. So, um, you know, we want to develop a house that can be lived in now and can be lived in in the future, no matter what happens with, um, the owners of the house. So that in terms makes us design a house that has wider doorways, wider hallways, uh, minimal steps in terms of the inside and the outside. Uh, main level living where we've got everything that needed for a house plus a master bedroom or a bedroom on that main level. All doorways, bathrooms, kitchens, everything like that is wheelchair, um, cleared. And we have provisions in for an elevator. We also decided to do a two-car attached garage with, which starts to increase off-street parking on Fallbrook and cleans up any kind of, um, detriment aesthetic to the neighborhood so that they will park their cars in the garage and do not need to use their garage for any type of storage. Um, and then we wanted to give them direct connectivity to the lake and the surrounding land. Um, both, but to the lake from the house, to the golf course from the house, but also around the house, which we are keeping that nice, uh, buffer on the south side. Uh, Eric, can you go to the next one, please? So when we look at both the existing site plan that you can see in the lower left-hand corner in our proposed site, site plan, we feel that we are drastically improving the site conditions. Um, both by, uh, improving our stormwater management that if we have questions, Anthony would be more than happy to discuss with you. Uh, we are improving our house positioning as to what was already there. We are increasing our green space overall. And we feel that with the aesthetics of the exterior, we are also improving our neighborhood character. Um, if you could click down again, Eric, please. Um, we're just showing some, what would be the roadside perspective, um, of this residence. Again, we're using roof lines and, um, more steeply pitched, lower, lower, um, plate heights so that we don't have large two-story walls anywhere. Um, we're doing a mix of materials. We're, we're really considering this kind of a shingle-style lake cottage, um, so that it will go along with the, uh, general aesthetic in the Fallbrook neighborhood. Um, Eric, could you please, Pat, uh, switch to the next one? And this is a, a rendering from the, the lakeside and we are doing, um, extensive landscaping to adhere to shoreline guidelines and conceal most of, you know, what we've got in terms of the house on the, on the lakeside as well as doing midpoint roofs again so that we don't make this structure feel like a large two-story, um, build right on the lake. And with that, I will pass it on to Sue, who, Sue Steele, who is the landscape architect, to describe a bit more of how we're adhering to the shoreline guidelines and what we're, what we're proposing, uh, for landscape.
Thanks, Pete. Um, Eric, can you go to the next slide? Okay. So this is the plan that was submitted. And, um, what I'd like to do is just walk you through the, the landscape design and site design. Um, Pete did a good job explaining why the, the site, the house and site elements are situated where they are and in some of the design process and decision-making that went into that. And I'll, I'll talk you through some of the aesthetic choices and some of the, the landscape, um, selections to, um, complement the shoreline development guidelines. So coming from Fallbrook, um, we're providing a walkway that provides access to the front porch, some foundation plantings, as Pete mentioned, um, providing access along the south property line by way of a, of lawn. Um, and that connects and provides access to the rear of the property, the lakeside of the property. The, the topography of the site is such that the, the break wall is several feet below the finished floor of the house. So starting at the covered patio, there is, um, there are terrace walls that, that keep the patio and, um, kind of gathering space adjacent to the house at the elevation of the house for easy access. There are a series of steps that descend down to a walkway that is at a, a very modest pitch to the dock area in a small patio that would gather small groups, four or five people, um, adjacent to the shoreline. Um, there is a spa proposed. It would be above grade and the walls of the spa would be, um, integrated into the terrace walls and utilizing shrub plantings, those walls would be screened and softened. Um, the shoreline development guidelines, we, we submitted a statement which you have, but just to reiterate, we're incorporating trees and plantings to soften the hardscape features. There's obviously a significant reduction in hardscape in the lakeside yard with the removal of the pool and associated caddios and decking. Um, and that's evident in this plan. So this is the plan that you have in front of you that everyone, um, had as part of the application. But in, um, can I go to the next, Eric, can you go to the next slide? And this photo shows, just kind of brings you to the site a little bit, showing you where, um, to the right, as you can see, the, the dash line shows the location of the, the house, the south building base. And that eight-foot wide accessway that would be a lawn panel providing access to the lakeside yard. The tree, um, that you see the yellow arrow pointing to, that would need to be removed due to construction, uh, activity and access on the site. We, um, through the design process, tried to figure out ways to maintain it, but there is just too much risk associated with construction to make it feasible to maintain that tree. We are introducing new tree plantings associated with the project to, as replacement. And I'd like to point on the left-hand side, we, the, the black arrow is pointing to a tree that is not on our property, but we were made aware that that tree is being removed by the adjacent property owner as part of their improvements on their property. Um, next slide. It was learning that where we decided to, both property owners, um, the north property and, and, um, our project, uh, to coordinate our landscape plan. So I met with their landscape architect and we reviewed the plans, the proposed plans for both properties along that shared property boundary to make sure that the planting was well-coordinated. And what you see on this slide is, um, our proposed plan. And the blue dash line is the house as exists today. The yellow dash line is the hedge as exists today. Eric, can you just go back one slide? Back one side. So the hedge, just so everyone has a visual, the hedge that is shown is that, uh, along the property line there that, that is, um, quite tall. So, so go to the next slide. Just want to make sure everyone saw that. So that yellow line is outlining where that is located. In the meeting with their landscape architect, they identified that, um, you see the LP adjacent to the, the yellow dash line, there, there's a circle. That is a proposed shade tree. Um, that is part, yes, thanks, Eric, um, on the north property. Can you go to the next slide? So in our conversation, we identified that the shade tree proposed as part of our project would be redundant and, um, contribute to, to blocking views associated with the north property's view south along the lake. We also identified that there is an opportunity, um, to reduce our, we, we were proposing a hedge row to be consistent with what was there today, existing. And we, there's opportunity to, and there isn't, um, need on behalf of this project to maintain that, that kind of wall or hedge, um, vegetative hedge along the property line. And that will be scaled back to just provide privacy where needed, which is right at the spa proper. Um, so those are two changes that we are considering as part of this project and would like to propose as an adjustment to the site plan that you had before you. And this, this came late in the, in the discussions, but next slide. So this plan shows the revisions. We would be removing that, that, that vegetative hedge and that large shade tree so that the planting proposed along that property line would be better coordinated. We're still maintaining the, um, one of the trees that is there along the property line, an ornamental tree that is smaller in scale and, um, and is, provides some, some softening of the house, um, architecturally. Um, and that's, I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that, that conversation and, and change in the plan. Next slide. And this is the last slide, just showing the existing condition to the left and the proposed planting, shoreline plantings and vegetation, screening of the hardscape and softening of, Pete did a great job in, in really focusing on how to break up the building so that it isn't, um, so it is within character of Fallbrook and doesn't have a significant impact on the shoreline. In combination with the vegetation, we feel that we've, we've made a significant improvement in decluttering the site, reducing hardscape and, and providing a, a much more appealing lake shore development. That's my last slide. Anthony, I don't know, or Pete, did you want to, um, take over or did Anthony have something to share?
I might get into the drainage and things of that nature if, if the board is interested in the site design and how we're going to handle stormwater, if they'd like to hear that, so.
Well, at this point, why don't we, uh, open up some questions from the board? I mean, I'll start one off. I think all of us want to know, you know, if there's any variances we've granted in this neighborhood that approach this 35% level that's being asked for.
And to answer that question, Terrence, yes, there is. There was one that was done for 36%. Um, I'd have to actually look back at my notes. I apologize to, to know exactly what address it was. Um, and there was, there was quite a few that had been done in the 30% range as well.
Do you remember, Peter, when the 36% was?
I am just, sorry, I had something. Oh, I'm just opening up my file right now. I am just, sorry, I had something, I'm just opening up my file right now. Okay, so I apologize. There was one for 38% and that was done in 1996. And then there was a handful of 31, 33, 33, 35, 34.36, 30, 30.7. So there is quite a few that have been done. And I know my list actually doesn't include all of them that have been even probably covered even today. But yes, there are quite a few in that range.
Hold that slide there for us for a minute, Eric, if you would.
Is this not easily visible? I can zoom in.
It was visible, I was just reading it. I was just trying to compare the dates. I know that in the past, the board, at least in the past period that I've been on the board, has been somewhat circumspect in their review of these applications.
It looks as though a lot of the larger variances go back quite a ways before, long before I was even on there.
Yeah, I think 33 in 2012 is the largest in the 12 years I've been on. There's a 35 from 14. What property address is that, Eric? That's Sandy Beach.
Yeah, we also have included similar-sized properties on this chart. But all the top ones that I think you're looking at, Terrence, are Fallbrook.
Yep, all right. Well, what other questions from the board?
Are we going to have to visit the spa later?
Well, that's a question.
No, they already have a pool onsite in the rear yard. So it would be considered a pre-existing nonconformity. They are grandfathered in to allow that.
Okay.
The height of the roof, I didn't notice that.
Well, we are under the 25-foot average height. What other questions from the board?
How many square feet is it?
Is the house in general? It's about 3,350 and that's including the main level and the upstairs.
Is there a basement?
We are actually doing a crawl space because of where we are in terms of floodplain and water issues and not wanting to put mechanicals or anything of that nature downstairs for basically safety reasons and not digging down too deep. And as you can see, the existing structure, there was no crawl space and there was no basement. So we feel like a crawl space is the best way to go with this project. So talk to us a little bit about what is driving the need for the square footage. I understand, you know, agent in place, you know, that's a concept we're all very familiar with. But, you know, two-person residence, I heard what you said about visiting guests and family. But what else that you've not shared is driving the need for the significant square footage on a lot this size?
Well, right, so let's say, obviously, the two-car garage adds quite a bit of space to any of these properties, as we know. And I think the two-car garage is an extreme benefit to all properties on the Fallbrook Road to get cars off of that. So that's a large part of it. They are, again, it's the two of them. They have friends, they have family, so they do want to be able to provide and enjoy time with everybody. But also, when they're by themselves, they will be primarily living on the main level, which is where the agent in place part of it comes from, which really does start to drive the square footage because we need to get a bedroom on that main level house plan. The other thing that it is, is they are moving from Chicago. They are moving from a larger house. We need to be able to fit their stuff in. And otherwise, we are just trying to provide a house that is comfortable for them to make this permanent change to the Canadega area and allows them to transition and enjoy their lake property that they did purchase.
Okay. Well, at this point, why don't we open this application to questions from anyone or comments, anyone in the public? Once again, click Participants at the bottom of your screen and then the Raise Hand button in the participant menu would like to address this application.
Greg Sholand.
All right, go ahead, Greg.
I want to thank the board. And first, just as a point of clarification, I think I heard my name for that first item that was on the agenda. I have no connection to that one. I don't know what that is about.
My mistake.
No problem at all, just wanted to make sure that was clear. I am here from Harder Sea Crest and Emery. I'm a land use attorney representing Gary and Laura Hasley, who own the property just to the north of this one at 3310 Fallbrook Park. And first want to make clear that the Hasleys are not opposed to this project. This is not a situation where one neighbor is trying to tell another what their property should look like or what they should be able to do with it. The Hasleys really just have a couple of very specific concerns. And I think the board has kind of zeroed in on what they are. The first one is just the size of this variance and the request to go to 35% with the building coverage. Looking at the list of other variances that have been allowed specifically in the Fallbrook Park neighborhood, because we think that's what's really relevant here. Because those are the properties that, when you think of a neighborhood and where the aesthetics matter, you're looking at sort of one street that's kind of got unique characteristics, the way that Fallbrook Park does. And the list of where the building coverage variances have gone really does see that most of them are, when a variance has been granted, it has been in the 20s, somewhere in the 20s range or very low 30s, like 30, 30.7 seems to be sort of the upper limit for the vast majority of them. And the couple of outlying ones, 34.36 was in 1990, 33 was in 2001, 38 on there was from 1996. And it appears that that structure is actually no longer there because it was consolidated with the adjacent property, 3394 and 3396. So the Hasley's feeling is really just that going to 35% on a lot of this size just is kind of out of character with the neighborhood and what sort of Fallbrook Park looks like aesthetically. And also, just sort of looking at the ZBA's precedent, what they have allowed in this neighborhood in terms of how far beyond the 25% that's allowed under the code. Specifically also with this property, as is already in the review materials, there are several nonconformities that are being allowed to continue and that are being improved. So, you know, there are some ways in which the setback is being improved and distance from the roadway are being improved. But there are already several nonconformities with this specific property that this would be adding one more. And again, going to 35% does seem sort of out of character with what the ZBA has allowed in the past. The second concern is the fire safety issue that was raised by the fire chief. And this really relates to the setback between the proposed 3312 property and the property to the north at 3310. There is very little space between those two properties currently. I believe Mr. Hasley sent an email to the town that includes a couple of photographs that show sort of how tight that space is. And the comments from the fire department, from the fire chief specifically raised the issue of the ability to get fire suppression equipment and firefighting emergency equipment into that very confined space. And we sort of share those concerns and want as much space for the safety of the residents of 3310 and 3312, both now and into the future. Because when one of these properties is being completely redone this way, where you're removing a home and adding a new one, this is really the one chance to increase that setback and increase the amount of space for houses that might be there for 100 years or more. So it really is sort of a unique opportunity to create more space between the two homes. And if the board is inclined to grant a variance, the Hasley's feeling is just that if it were not in the neighborhood of 35% and were lower, that the amount of space that is saved by reducing the building footprint come from a reduction in square footage along that northern building line to increase the space between the two properties. Again, I just want to reiterate that the Hasleys are not opposed to this project and have had actually some very positive and sort of neighborly conversations with the applicants. And they've really appreciated that. The two landscape architects have worked together and that has been very much appreciated. And they want to be good neighbors. The Hasleys don't want to, again, be opponents to this project. They just wanted to make sure that those couple of very specific concerns were before the board. And it seems like, again, the same kinds of things that the ZBA members have been thinking about with this. And also, we wanted to take into account what the county, in the county planning board's review of this project had said about the character of the neighborhood and the fact that a variance of this scope, especially piled on top of the other nonconformities that already exist at this property, just would make it sort of an outlier that we think just doesn't fit with what Fallbrook Park looks like and what the zoning code has kind of expressed as far as what Fallbrook Park should look like going forward.
Greg, since you brought it up, earlier today, I reached out to Linda Phillips at the county planning board with a question about the minutes from them. They had a misunderstanding of what was proposed. And so they revised those minutes to where it's no longer a recommended denial, which I believe is what you were referring to as far as their previous language and whatnot that they had in their minutes. So they sent out revised minutes earlier today.
Okay, yeah, I did not see that. I was working from the minutes that were previously out there that recommended denial. And that specifically raised the issue of sort of the piling of multiple nonconformities and adding an additional one with this new application with the building coverage issue. And then specifically the reference to the neighborhood character and kind of what the zoning, what the zoning rules and the bulk requirements for lot coverage and building coverage were sort of intended as far as setting aesthetic limits for the benefit of all the property owners. I also wanted to just reiterate again on the fire issue that the fire chief raised as a safety concern. There are sort of these tactical, just logistical tactical issues with emergency response and fire suppression that relate to the ability to get hoses and to have an adequate water supply brought in when there's such a small amount of space between the two properties.
All right, thank you, Greg. Anyone else from the public that would like to comment on this application? Okay, I see Barbara Willis, did I pronounce that right?
Yes, that's right.
Go ahead.
Yes, I'm at 3316, so I'm two doors down. I just had a couple of questions. I guess, number one, the concern over the 35% building coverage on that lot and because it's just a standard lot there. Also, I saw the proposed building on there. I'm just wondering, I don't see it overexposed on the current building. How far out lakeside does that proposed house go compared to the existing house now? I know they're going to take out that pool, but how, you know, it's on the site plan. I can't see, it doesn't go, it doesn't show where the existing house, oh, okay. Now, so the yellow is the existing house?
Yes, so you want to know the distance between like that yellow mark and where?
And the end of this house. So it's a huge, see, when that juts out like that, that, I don't know, it just, it raises concerns as far as aesthetics and north lake view. It just, it looks like it's very overcrowded.
So the house is moving closer to the lake, but it's not, it doesn't need a variance on the lakeside?
It does not, even though it goes out that far?
Yeah, so, do you see, Barbara, there is a black dashed line in the middle. Yeah, Eric is outlining.
Yes, yes.
If you took the required setbacks for that parcel, that is sort of the envelope or blueprint of where you could build a house within code. So on the lakeside, it's not in violation of the code. It could go closer.
Okay, but I'll tell you, when we rebuilt, we had to stay on the original footprint, could not go off the footprint an inch. And this is way over the footprint of the original house.
That is true. I can't speak.
So concerning, and I don't think I'm the only one voicing the concern on the size of increase over that original footprint.
No, you're not. I voiced the concern as well in my questioning. All right, I'm looking down our list here. Anyone else who would like to speak to this application?
Excuse me, Terrence, do we have a chance to just kind of explain a little bit more to?
My custom is I hear comments from the audience and then I always go back to the applicant.
Okay.
So just make a list of notes, Peter. I don't see anyone else, I think we'll be coming right to you. But that is generally how we conduct the hearing.
Elsa and Fred? I just see Elsa and Fred Reed on here, I don't know if they want to comment.
Yes, I'm just wondering, so there is no, I am accustomed, actually, I'm an urban planner. And we normally build in your building line. And I don't understand how this is at the lakeside. What Barb mentioned is, and if I understand it right, you're more concerned with a building line than on the roadside and not on the lakeside? Is that correct?
No, I don't think it's what we're more concerned with. We don't set the code, this board, the code is what it is. I'm just simply telling Barbara that while the house is moving closer to the lakeside, it's within code on that side, on that setback from the house to the lake.
All right, so there is not a real building line on the lakeside?
There is, but it's 30 feet. So while they're moving up 20 feet from 72 feet to 52, they could theoretically move up another 20 feet to 30 feet before getting to that setback line that would then require a variance for that rear yard setback.
Well, I just would like to also concur with Barb in terms of the massiveness of the entire house and the movement of that house towards, you know, towards property lines on my side, which is 3314. And I do think, you know, the concern with the, you know, the overlook of the windows and everything on my property, I don't know if that can be corrected. You know, there is no privacy anymore. This is a big change in my privacy also on my lot. So those are definitely concerns I would like to bring up. The tree, removal of the tree, I have no problems with. I do think that the tree is over its peak there. Minor concern would be the fixing of the fence there, but I'm sure that's nothing. Anyway, those are the things I would like to raise. I'm, again, very grateful that Kelly and Rick have decided to start their building, hopefully in September for them. And just like the lawyer mentioned before, for And just like the lawyer mentioned before, for God's sake, Greg, you know, we want to also be good neighbors, and we're looking forward to welcoming them to our neighborhood, and that's about it.
Thank you very much. And just to clarify, you're the property owner directly to the south, correct?
That's correct, three-three-one-four Fallbrook Park.
And so I heard you express some concern about the structure moving closer to your property, but just want to go back to that outline, and it's on this map as well. Here, it's the red dashed line, that this structure as proposed would still be within that setback to your property line?
Yeah, but as I mentioned before, it is quite a change of the existing property. It's coming quite a bit closer to my house, and with that, my privacy is basically eliminated.
No, I understand the concern.
Also, with the big turret of windows on the corner there, that's just overlooking my entire property.
Yep. Okay, do we have any-
That's it.
Questions or comments on this application from anyone in the audience? Going once, twice, all right, we will go back to the applicant. In any order, I know you've got a whole team there.
Terrence, Terrence, this is Pete Heinzlman. I guess I'd like to first kind of address this, this lakeside concern that I've heard. You kind of did with the fact that, I mean, we, we do have the ability to push this house thirty feet from the lake according to our zoning laws in Canadega. But what we are doing and what we are attempting to do, which is, if you look at this site map that Eric has pulled up, you can see the outline of both neighbors' houses. And we are relatively staying right in line with all those houses while still pushing ourselves, yes, we're pushing closer to the lake, but we are staying in line with the remainder of the neighborhood. But we are also freeing up space for a parking and getting the house off of the road, which we believe is a strong suit for this neighborhood. Because many of you know, as you drive down Fallbrook Road, there are cars can be parked just about anywhere. And we think this is a safety issue, but also a very nice aesthetic issue that we can get the cars definitely parked off the road. We know we have parking along the other side, but I think this will definitely help. And furthermore, Eric, if you could just pull up the Encore map, we can also see that really, if we look at three-three-one-zero and then we go to three-three-one-six and three-three-one-eight, three-three-two-zero, our house is going to be just in line with pretty much all of our neighbors in terms of where our decks and everything start to happen. I was talking more the back of those houses, Eric, but-
We got you, Pete, I know what you're saying.
Oh, I'm sorry, I see what you're drawing, I'm sorry. So we just want to make sure that we, you know, we're not trying to do something out of the norm or out of the, the neighborhood aesthetic in terms of pushing our house further from the road and closer to the lake. We're actually trying to make our house closer to what all the neighbors in the rest of the neighborhood is, and already does have in terms of their property. So I hope, I hope that helps clarify a bit of why we are positioning the house, where we are positioning the house. The other thing I'd like to just kind of mention in terms of what Greg Sholen was explaining with the fire chief, and I do understand what he is talking about, but, but as of now, we are actually negative one over the property line. We are helping out by, by four feet right now, plus the fact that we are, by code, are allowed to do this, and we will build that as a firewall and do all the necessary things to build that wall in compliance with fire safety. So I really don't think that should be too much of a concern. But I did want to address the fact that, that we are working with them and, and building this house per code and what is allowed. I think that- I think that was what I had. I don't know, Sue or Anthony, anything?
I think one of the good things that we need to, to look at is with the lot coverage and the building coverage, with this variance in this project, we are taking, taking down the overall lot coverage on a sense of protecting the lake with, with stormwater runoff and stormwater mitigation on that side of things. Right now, there is no stormwater mitigation on this property. Everything just kind of flows to the lake, and it's not, it's not treated, it's not held back during a storm. With this project going forward, if we are granted the variance, we are going to use a couple of different methods of stormwater mitigation with some porous, some porous pavement, some infiltration trenches and things of that nature. So the water that will be coming off of this house, when we look at a stormwater perspective, it will be treated, it'll benefit the health of the lake going forward. So I just wanted to make sure that's, that's clear to the board. We're doing everything we can to mitigate stormwater runoff.
Well, Anthony, I don't know that we probably spent enough time with that issue as maybe we should. Why don't you just expand a little bit more? Just give us the key elements of your, your stormwater system.
Okay, so currently with the way that the house is now, there are some downspouts that go to splash blocks. There's also some downspouts that go into some underground storage or underground drainage that just goes directly to the lake. There is no holding back water. There is no storage of water to get the water to get, to percolate back into the soil and hold it back from directly going to the lake. So by using the driveway, instead of using a regular asphalt, we're using a porous type pavement. So any water that drops, any water that falls on to the driveway or flows across the driveway, the driveway will suck it in basically and put it into a storage area. There's a gravel storage area under that driveway that'll help hold that water during a storm and let it percolate back into the soil over a period of time instead of just letting it run directly to the lake. We're also using a few infiltration trenches that are perforated pipe that run underground that are surrounded by stone. So when water does get into those area drains and it's flowing down the area drain, it has a chance to get back into the soil. It's not just directly directed right to the lake. And then the last line of defense is a overflow drywell on the southwest corner of the stormwater system. And that overflow, that overflow drywell allows us to, to hold back water during an event. And if there is a large event, that, that stormwater will raise up out of the rim of the storm, of that manhole, and then it'll gently sheet flow to the lake instead of a direct discharge. It kind of will bubble up if there's a big storm. But there's enough, there's enough storage here that, that won't happen very often. It had to be a very large storm for something of that, that nature. So those are some of the, the ways that we are helping this site and to protect the lake from any kind of negative stormwater discharge.
What's the capacity of the overflow drywell?
I'd have to look at the CACs, I think they're involved, but I don't know what they are offhand.
All right, I've monopolized it enough. Let's go to the other members of the board. What other questions do you have?
Terrence? I just had a question. Other times, I think, when we've had, and this may not be pertinent to the actual variance, but we've had building walls right close to sidelines. The issue, I think, has come up about maintenance at times of, you know, the exterior wall that's right near the sideline. I know they're improving the situation, but still, three feet is still not a whole lot of space for being able to maintain things.
It is not. Is there any discussion with the neighbors to the north about maintenance issues and use of their property to conduct maintenance?
I just asked our, the owners if they have had any direct conversations with them. I'm not, I'm not sure if they've had those types of direct conversations. I will say in terms of architecturally speaking and kind of the design of what we have there, we've kept that side of the, the building extremely simple. As you can see, it's a straight line. The gutters and the roofs and everything are very simple over there, so in a very few windows for privacy, but also in terms of just, I don't know, if we probably just have a straight-on shot, Eric, if anything.
There we go, that's helpful, right there, yep.
So, you know, we're trying to maintain that north elevation as simply as possible. We've got stone that wraps around the bottom and, bottom, bottom part of our foundation, which helps in terms of maintenance with snow, water, splashing of that kind. We will be using some sort of a cementitious or maintenance-free, if you will, siding along with all our trim and trim packages. So we do feel that in terms of maintenance on this side, it will be slim to none. But you guys are definitely right, there will be maintenance. And, you know, one thing that, that both Rick and Kelly do is maintain a pretty, you know, they are very neat. You could go about saying they're kind of neat freaks, but they will not, you know, let things degrade, and they will do their, their best and work with anybody they need to.
Okay, good question.
I'm just hearing, they actually already have people, you know, they're already looking into people that they will be using for maintenance of the property throughout the year. So in terms of having anything fall off, if they go on vacation or whatnot, they will always have people in the area that can, can help or fix anything.
Okay, what other questions from the board? All right, not hearing any. Pete, you've kind of taken the lead. Our question at this point is always whether the applicant's comfortable closing their application.
Can you, can you just give us one, one second there? I'm just conversing with the team.
Shooting off some quick text messages, right?
Yeah, yeah, apologize, Terrence.
No, no problem.
You got to change everything when we're all digital. Can I just? Sorry.
Interject for a second.
So who, who do we have speaking?
This is Elsa, and I am at three-three-one-four Fallbrook Park.
Sure, go ahead.
I have a question about those drywells that facing my, my property. My property is significantly lower than the festals. And that water will not drain to the lake, but that water will definitely drain towards my property. There's no doubt about it.
So I believe what Anthony was saying about that system is that those drains are connected by drainage tile, basically, that's buried and surrounded in gravel. So some of that, I'm not the engineer, I can't tell you what rate of the flow, but some of that will go to the lake, give the capacity for some of it to percolate through the soil. Anthony, am I getting that right, or do you want to fix it?
Yeah, you, you, you do have that correct. I just want to make a fact that with the regrading and the redesign of how the, the grading will work is, there will not be any, it will not flow onto the neighbor's property. We will take every precaution to make sure that it flows, it has a natural flow to the lake. We did not do micro grading on that side, but that, the, the purpose of all this is not to bring any, any extra drainage or any stormwater runoff to the neighbor to the north or to the south. That water, if it does percolate out of the drywell, it will make it to the lake before it makes it onto the neighbor's property. That we will take very good care of, making sure there is no spillage of stormwater.
Yeah, I'm very concerned about that because we are really significantly lower. So, but I appreciate that, thanks.
Anthony, what depth are you burying that drainage tile line in?
It should be about a, about twelve to thirteen inches below the surface, just enough so it's, it doesn't affect any kind of flooding or anything like that.
Okay.
It is low enough, and some of the grading that we are doing, we are higher because of where the, where the, the pool is. It is significantly higher, but when we tear out that pool, we are regrading that to also get back some, some flood capacity, bring back that flood capacity to the lake so we don't just disturb any kind of, we don't create any kind of bringing up and displacing our floodwaters on a neighboring property. So you can kind of see how we're bringing some of that grade back. You can see that flood plain compensation area, that's a higher area. Now, we're going to pull that back a little bit so we, we don't, you know, take any floodwater and displace, displace any floodwaters on a neighboring properties. And also, we are lowering that grade in that area because of the tearing out of the pool, because it is higher because of the pool. So with the pool being removed, we are lowering that grade about a foot.
All right, Pete, that bought you a couple of minutes.
It did, thank you. I actually, Kelly Vesta would like to chime in if she can, really quick, the owner of the property. Let me make sure, can you unmute her, Eric, please?
I guess I'm muted.
Okay, Kelly?
Yes, hello, everyone. My maiden name is Belle. So, Mr. Avery, my dad was a friend of yours down where, we lived where the Randalls do now. My first week after being born was on Canadega Lake, and I have been there almost every summer since then. I promise you guys, we will do nothing. My dad would turn over in his grave if I ever did anything negative towards Canadega Lake or the properties or our neighbors. We will not. Elsie, there will be no problems with privacy any different than there has ever been with the wide-open kitchen and open space that was there before. If anything, we will protect that. I, I just want you guys to know that Canadega has been in my heart from my entire life, and there is nothing I would do or Rick or I would authorize that in any way would be detrimental to that, to Canadega and the view that everyone gets. What's interesting to me now is I see some of the homes have built arborita and different plantings down along the side of their homes so that it definitely impedes the view. I thought that wasn't allowed. My dad said to me, you can never obscure anyone's view, and we've talked to the Hasleys about that. And Elsie, with you, it's not an issue. We, we just wouldn't do it. So I, I hope you guys will look favorably on what we want to do. I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank you, we appreciate that. All right, Pete, how are we feeling about this application? Pete, what's your thought? Would you like to close or keep it open? I'm not getting you, you might be on mute, Pete.
I'm sorry, I was muted, sorry, everyone. I just have one question for Eric. Eric, with the change in what the county said, so they did not refer denial of this project.
Correct.
So that means, okay, so I just want to make sure that I'm aware of what we're, what we're looking for in terms of the approval. Okay. Okay, um. Okay, I think we will, um, close the hearing.
All right. Thank you. As we said before, 61 days to render a decision, but it's our custom to deliberate and vote the same evening we hear applications. All right, we will move on. Our next application. This is property forty-nine, sixty-three Waters Edge. They're seeking variances for lot coverage, forty-four and a half percent when thirty percent is the max. Building coverage, twenty-five percent when twenty percent is the max. And front setback, thirty-five feet when fifty-five feet is the minimum required.
Good evening, Terrence. This is Brennan Mark. It's Mark's Engineering. How are you?
We're doing well. Go ahead, Brennan.
Yeah, so I'd like to introduce this application. Um, so the, the application is to tear down and rebuild an existing house on Waters Edge, the lakeside of Waters Edge Drive, which Waters Edge is a private drive from the turn where it turns north down, uh, to the north. So they, uh, plan to rebuild or tear down existing cottage that's kind of falling and dilapidated near the, uh, lake. It's actually really close to the lake and, um, remove a couple of trees and remove the utilities. And then they're going to reconstruct a new house further back from the lake. There you are, Eric. Yep, um. The new house will be, the total footprint for the house, the garage and, um, the dax is twenty five ninety-six. I might have missed my numbers there, but it's right around twenty-five hundred square feet. And then they'll have an access driveway off of Waters Edge Drive to the new garage. The, uh, proposed uh, variances are fifteen foot front setback from a private right of way on Waters that, that connects the houses to the north from Waters Edge Drive, a five point one building coverage, um, square, of building coverage variance from the twenty percent allowed. I think I got that right. Uh, fourteen point five percent lot coverage variance from the, there you go, thirty percent allowed. The, uh, so it's kind of a double standard here. The private right of way that connects the houses to the north, uh, we are required to have front setback off that private right of way. Also, we're required to include the private right of way in our lot coverage calculation. So if it was a public right of way like County Road sixteen, we would totally exclude all that impervious area from our lot coverage. That total lot coverage for the, just the private right of way is nine point six five percent. So realistically, we're asked, in my terms, we're asking for a four point eight five percent lot coverage variance. However, we have to include that private right of way, which we have no use for on this site, but.
Okay, hold on.
To set back from that.
Brennan, let's spend a little bit of time, let's spend a little bit of time with that. I think that will be an important issue. So, and I'm not sure I'm following it either. Where is the right of way that you're talking about?
It's, uh, that, that's the property line and then twenty feet over is the right of way line. That, yeah, that's the drive there.
So I see the edge of pavement. Okay, and the right of way comes over. And that whole width, the length of that western boundary, the property you're saying, has to be included in the
Lot coverage calculations. Yep. And then we're required to reset back off of that private right of way for the front setback.
Yeah.
So we're, we kind of held the two different standards, but it, it's, we, I've, I've deliberated this with, uh, Eric quite a bit. And this is what we came up with. So maybe things will change going forward. We don't know. Um, so the building coverage is, I mean, that's a realistic request of five point one. It is a small lot. It's a small cottage lot. It was formed a long time ago. So it's not a obscenely large house. I think the footprint of the finished space of the house is eighteen hundred square feet, or I should say, I think the finished living space of the house is eighteen hundred square feet. And then he has a deck that wraps around it. One of the reasons we set it so far back off of the lake is to not impede the houses to the north and south. As you can see there, we kind of drew a line from the south house to the north house and somewhat kept our average front of our house in that line. We could, the other option would be to rebuild the existing house where it sits and maybe expand it to the rear. However, that would not be very favorable for the either neighbors because it would be directly in their view.
So let's talk a little bit about the setback from the west. You've got to have fifty-five feet, but we have to, go from the eastern boundary, the right of way, correct?
Yes.
So what's our measurement just from the property line?
Uh, there would be an additional twenty feet to that. So that would be.
Exactly fifty-five, right?
Exactly. We would meet that required setback.
Well, for me, this issue of the setback is, is pretty significant. Um, what other questions members of the board have?
We revisit, uh, all of the variances on that one chart. Take another look.
So just in order, you know, Bob, is we're probably going to look at them as the lot coverage.
Right.
Thirty percent is what they can build up and they're asking for forty-four and a half. But Brennan, you're saying ten percent of that is the right of way?
Correct. Yep.
Okay, so really it'd be a thirty-four and a half. It's not worth, you know, this property. Building coverage is twenty-five point one when twenty percent is allowed, but the building coverage is not impacted by the right of way at all.
Right.
On the setback, fifty-five feet is what they need to have. They, they'll be at thirty-five feet, but you add in the twenty feet from the right of way and they're at fifty-five. The front setback, this is to the south, ten point ten feet. When it's no less than fifty-five feet. And your current structure, it's a six point nine seven. So you're coming back three feet and change, right?
Yes.
But that's to the deck?
Yes, it is.
What's the, the distance to the actual, um, face of the house?
It's a good question. Um, I would tell you it's about fourteen feet. Yeah, this is a rendering of the house that New Energy Works did. That, and there, I don't know if it, there, I'll tell you, there's on that south side of the property line, there's a ten foot strip. That's actually a public right of way, a town to the lake off of the end of right of Waters Edge Drive. So there's a ten foot piece of land that either the town or the county owns. We can't figure that out yet, but, um, all the way down to the lake, that's going to always be grass and, and it's non-buildable. It's a right of way for the public.
Yeah.
How, how big is the existing house? What's the square footage?
It's, uh, it's not that big actually. It's, it's, I would estimate about nine fifty.
Well, eighteen hundred's not very big either, but so, just, just trying to, so there, you're doubling, basically doubling the size of it.
That's right. Yeah. Pretty close. Just about a thousand, it looks like.
All right. What other questions from the board?
What, why would the, uh, the building coverage in relationship to the, the, uh, the area that's set aside to the, I guess it would be to the west, why would that not be considered the same way as the lot coverage? I mean, no one's going to build on this.
Right. We, we, uh, we wanted to do this, actually include it in the lot coverage and the building coverage. And I did talk to Eric about this. That is actually a public strip of land. We don't privately own that, so we can't include it. Even though it's never going to be built on. So realistically, the density is, is about the same, or if not better, than the neighbor properties, meaning density as in impervious to green space. However, we can't include that in our calculations.
Well, I understand. I'm just trying to, I agree with Terrence. I think from a lot coverage basis, it's, it's a significant difference than if it wasn't there. And I'm wondering, maybe it adds the same scope with the, the building coverage as well to me.
Yeah, no, you're right. If you could include the right of way in the building coverage determination, it would be a much lower number.
We would, we would be, we would actually be right in line with, with the zoning code allows.
Any other questions from the board?
And, um, Terrence, I did do a bit of homework on, uh, some variances in the area, if you care to hear them.
You know, I always do. Well, we all do. That's one of our favorite questions.
In two thousand and two at thirty-five, thirty-four oh five, Westlake Boulevard, you, uh, granted a twenty-three point four percent building coverage. Uh, in December, if you, if he's tracking these down, I'll wait for him.
What was the address? Thirty-four oh two?
Forty-four oh five, yep. So that's a building coverage there. You've granted a four percent building coverage, just about four percent building, I should say three point three and a half percent building coverage. That is a little bit to the south. It's the same type of neighborhood, same private or same right of ways cottage city, right? In December of nineteen, you granted a eight point seven percent lot coverage to thirty-six fifteen. That's on County Road sixteen. That's a little bit further south. But it's more, the more recent ones I've found, it's right about there. Yeah, it's Barbara Michaels right there. So lakeside of the road, little tiny lot. On July of nineteen, you granted a fifty foot front setback for a zero lot line setback at forty-one thirty-four County Road sixteen. That's quite a bit further south.
That one, if I remember correctly, was for the shed though, right? There was supposed to be a shed or a wall or something down there.
Yeah. That's just a, that's right. That is for a shed. So we can, we can negate that one. Uh, personally, I did in February twenty, we did a twenty-one point four one front setback at Iron, Iron, Island View Terrace for Loretta, Loretta Richardburg.
Yeah, this was like a, a double wide, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
So that's, that's all I have for the dirty laundry.
All right. Let's, um, go to the public on this application. Once again, uh, click on participants and then the raise the hand button. If you would like to speak to this application. All right. See, no, uh, hands raised on that one. Brennan, is there anything else you'd like to add? Or are you comfortable closing your application?
I guess I would just open up to the architect and the owner. If they would like to say anything, they're welcome to.
Of course.
Hi, this is Ty Allen from New Energy Works. Now, I think Brennan, you covered the major points. I just wanted to reiterate that, you know, a couple of things that the hardship, so to speak, is, is clearly created by this, um, easement. And, uh, I just think that, um, we'd ask the board to entertain the fact that that and the easement that goes down to the lake, uh, those are really creating the issue. And Brennan's point, the density and the character and the nature and the green space of the property really is in concert with or if not better than those in the surrounding properties. And so in the spirit of things, uh, I think that if we didn't have these non-self-created hardships, um, you know, the, the house is really in character with what's there. We've tried to keep the profile to the lake is, is compact as possible and use the depth of the lot. Um, as Brennan mentioned, we tried to draw a line between the neighboring properties to keep the, the front of the house sort of in line with and in, in the spirit of the neighboring properties. So I think we've done the things that we can do to, to minimize the profile to the lake. It's not a huge, um, it's not a huge footprint by any means. Um, you know, in terms of the size of the house, it is roughly just under two thousand square foot for the living space. But there's no, you know, oversized bedrooms. In fact, you know, we try to be really modest with living space to keep the footprint as compact as possible and leverage the walkout as much as we can. So I think we've taken the steps that we can to try to, to lessen the impact as much as possible. And, um, and, and that's really, uh, that's really been the thrust of what we're trying to do. So I, I think that's all I really have to say.
All right. Thank you, Ty. Um, we didn't hear from the owner.
Yeah. Can you hear us now?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, we appreciate your consideration. Uh, we, uh, live in Canada, they will pretty much, uh, for the past twenty or so years and up in the hills and looking forward to kind of moving down to the lake and, uh, been spending time down there and we've talked to all the neighbors around and they're pretty excited about, uh, our project and, and getting rid of the, the existing structure and, and moving stuff back. And I think there's five, five houses on this, on this road and, and it's, it's just going to make the whole, the whole area much nicer. That's about it. You know, I, I think it's a nice project and, uh, we appreciate you considering it.
Thank you. All right, Brennan, comfortable closing?
Yep.
All right. Well, that worked. We'll close, uh, this application. Next. Um, our final application is for property forty-nine, fifty-nine Island Beach Drive. Seeking a variance for a front setback of ten point eight feet when fifty feet's required. This application was previously reviewed in May of twenty nineteen. Anthony, you're going to speak to this or is there someone else in the team?
Uh, no, I could speak to this. Uh, so the owners, um, Richard and Kimberly Gray, they, they started the project. They built the garage on the west side of Island Beach Drive and then they, they left the house up during construction. Um, they recently, a few months ago, they decided to go forward with the home construction. And they tore down the house. They did all, you know, they got everything torn down and we laid out the new house and the, um, they're a little concerned just kind of where the original house was on the lot. We centered it originally. Um, we did have a, a, a side setback on the north side of the original cottage of like a foot. It was really close, but we did bring it down south. But as soon as, as soon as we saw it on, laid out on the lot, um, it, it encroached a little bit closer to the south side. There's, the home on the south is a, is a lot closer to the property line than the home to the north. So we're trying to do by, by altering this, the, um, the location of the house. We're not changing anything, um, other than shifting the house a few feet to the north. We're keeping the existing variance that was granted, um, the same. It's just with the change and shifting it to the north, um, the zoning board has to look at it again, just to make sure nothing's changed and it won't, they don't believe that the, the variance that was granted and us shifting it would, would directly negatively affect the, the project. But with that being said, it does give a little bit more space to the house to the south. And there is a greater, um, space on the house to the north because they do have a larger lot to the north. So that's kind of what we're doing. The variance that was granted is staying the same. We're just shifting the house, um, like two, it's like three feet to, four feet to the north. But we are far enough from that property line to where there are no fire codes that come into place. And there is plenty of space between the two houses if anything may happen.
Sorry for me jumping around or out there. Just again, chip. This was the existing conditions there before everything. Um, you can see it's just one and, one foot off the property line. This is what was approved previously. And then this is the one for what's being proposed, just five feet off the property line.
And just give us the calculation that. And just give us the calculation that the approved one is how many feet off the property line to the north? Approved.
It was at the setback, so uh, eight feet, I believe.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Yeah, it was right at the setback.
Yeah, eight feet, okay. Going to five, okay.
Yes.
But all dimensions of the project other than the, are staying the same. It's just that move to the north.
That is correct. We're just shifting it away from the south property line toward the north.
Okay.
And that, like I said, that gives, if you can go to like an encore picture, Eric, if you have it up. You can kind of see that the house on the south is, it's got a narrower lot and there is a little bit more space to the north. Um, so that's kind of the feeling um, that we came up with. It would give a little bit more a better aesthetic from the lake and just for the owners to have a little bit more space on the south side.
All right, well, let's open up to the board. What questions do we have from the board on this application?
So how much I, so say this again, what, what was, what did we approve and then what's, what's the change, I guess?
The version we approved did not require a setback to the north. It's eight feet and the structure was going to be at eight point three. And now we're going to five.
Okay.
And just to be clear, no setback variance or no side setback variance is still required because it's still an improvement over that pre-existing non-conformity, which was one foot. So the setback or the variance requested is that front setback from the private right-of-way at ten point eight feet, which is what you guys reviewed and approved last year.
Well, we have to review it because it's a change to the plans and we put in there the standard term and condition that you can't change the plans.
Right.
Got it. Thank you.
The variance is muted at this point if they change it.
Right. I mean,
variance that we granted, it's just, it's the same ten point eight feet. It's just shifted to the north.
Yeah, I think Dave's just, his only point was that if we allow the change in the project, the prior variance from last year becomes null and void and we're issuing the new variance.
Based on this map, yes, correct.
Yep. All right, well, why don't we go to the public? Anyone that would like to comment or speak to this uh, application? Once again, please raise your hand by clicking participants and then the raise hand button. All right, not seeing any. Is there anything else you'd like to add? Anthony or uh, anything that the property owner or the architect would like to add before we close?
I, I'm not sure if the property owner and architect are on, but I'm, I'm comfortable.
Okay. Well, with that, we will close. Um, once again, we have sixty-one days to render our decision. Now let's begin deliberations. We'll take them in the order that we heard them. So we'll start with fifty-four eighty-nine Johnson Road. This is the barn.
I, I personally, I, I don't really have much issue with it because that whole neighborhood has horses and cows and animals. I mean, it's all right in that same vicinity, but um, you know, it's only two horses too, so.
What was that, Chip?
I agree with Kelly.
Yeah.
I do too. She's got five acres.
All right, well, let's call it then.
Give me one second while I pull up the decision sheet, apologies.
You didn't think we were going to be that fast, did you?
I know.
You thought this one was going to be a slugfest.
So for Susan Leacy at five four eight nine Johnson Road in Canada, Eggwa, um, she, the applicant was requesting an area variance to house animals in a structure eighty-six point five feet from the street line, when one hundred feet is the minimum required. Shall the applicant be granted an area variance of thirteen point five feet to house animals in a structure? Bob?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Chip? Sorry, was that Chip?
Yes.
Terrence?
Sorry, did you call me? I couldn't hear.
Yes, Terrence.
Yes.
Okay. Um, do you want to add any reasons and conditions on this?
Oh yeah, I'm getting ready. So the board's decision is based on the descriptions and drawings uh, provided on the dates that will be given by the development office. And the board is determined that the benefit to the applicant does outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood or commuting there for the variance is granted. The board's decision is based upon the facts presented during the public hearing and the following specific findings of fact. First, the board has found that the variance is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. The neighborhood is a residential area with other livestock on neighboring parcels and in the general vicinity. The variance is not significant. Uh, the owner has a plan to have the entrance to the barn uh, not be facing the road, which will help um, increase safety. Um, it's a minimal variance. I already addressed that saying it's not substantial.
Did you say the, it will not have an adverse effect on the property or neighborhood?
No, I wasn't, yeah, we, I wasn't there yet.
Okay.
I wanted to talk about the location of the barn, that this is a pre-existing structure that was built within code and is being converted uh, for the use of animals or, or livestock. Uh, the structure is not going to have a negative impact on the character of the neighborhood. Or I should say the use of the structure because the structure is already there. And then we'll put on the following two conditions. The variance granted is specific to the most recent plan submitted to the zoning board of appeals. Any change in the plan shall invalidate the variance. And the variance is conditioned on building permits being issued. Well, no, building permit required. We can skip that one.
Yep.
Are there any other findings of fact or conditions that anyone on the board would like to add? No? Okay. Let's go on to thirty-three twelve Fallbrook.
To me, this one's close, but it seems like this is a new build and there is some problems on that north side.
Yep.
I um, I was uh, impressed with the uh, with the uh, presentation. And I think the, there are a lot of improvements uh, with this new build. The environmental looks uh, good and the view from the lake looks good. Um, but my concern is that perhaps they're trying to make all their dreams come true on a lot that's uh, too small. And uh, I, I can't support the uh, thirty-five percent.
You know, Bob, I'm with you on this one. I, I love a lot about this project. I like it that they're taking a house which is encroaching on the northern property line and pulling it back, pulling it back from the road. They're installing some great uh, stormwater uh, treatment systems. You know, the, I, I like all of that. It's just a step too far for me on the, on the coverage. Anyone else have thoughts they want to share?
I wonder how, um, one of the things they, they discussed was, you know, obviously it's not a, a basement, it's crawl space. So a lot of the components will be, I'm assuming in the attic or something, you know, under the roof line, right? I don't, we didn't, I don't know if we really discussed that. But that, you know, it takes up space. I, I don't know. I mean, it's, did we even, we, we kind of touched on it, but um, what are your thoughts on that?
Briefly touched on it, but yeah, I guess the mechanical equipment would end up taking space in the building somewhere.
So Kelly, to answer your question, um, certainly, you know, that's a consideration that those utilities have to go somewhere in the house. For me, it, it's not really a huge factor. I look at the overall aspect of wanting to protect the lake and those properties along the lake have a potential for a large impact. And we've been, you know, fairly narrow in how far we'll go above that, that twenty-five percent coverage limit. I think it's just a significant substantial request. We've gone to that thirty range before, but.
What about, um, I mean, it's a two-car garage, correct? Is that what?
Yeah. Garage.
So I mean, some of those things could potentially go there if there's parking or was it, you know, whatever. I, I was actually trying to figure, figure out a solution for them. I mean, the house isn't huge, but again, that's that lot and it's Fallbrook. So I, and I understand, I mean, I don't think we've, you know, that's, that's a significant increase in lot coverage, so.
Yeah, it's tough for me. I personally, I love the design. I think they've done so many good things. It's just a little bit too far.
Yeah.
Well, I think there's some legitimate questions from the neighbors to the north and the fire department as well. I, I, I'm just saying it's, that's a really tight line there. It'd be one thing if they were trying to build on the existing, of course, and then be over the line, but so this is definitely an improvement, but this is a new build. They're so close. They have a little room to go farther towards the lake. They need the space, then maybe that's what they have to do.
Well, then that runs the question of, you know, are you impeding on the view of the neighbors, right?
Yeah. I, I mean, I, I lo, I really like the design. I think it's really good. I like that they've kept it in line with the other properties. Like I said earlier, I like it that they pulled it back from the road. I think that's a great improvement. It's just a little bit too large for me.
Right.
Personally, and you know, for maybe for the applicant's benefit, just to hear some thoughts. In terms of the setbacks, I think we all understand and appreciate the complexities of those lots and it's almost, it's not impossible, but it's very difficult to build within all of the setbacks. And I think that our history demonstrates that we're more open to consideration of setback variances where needed for a project in that neighborhood. But I think it, this one goes pretty far beyond what we've done on lot coverage.
Yeah, I, I would reiterate that trying to make all the dreams come true on a, on a lot this size is tough. If, you know, I'm not sure what their priorities are. I was thinking that if I was faced with this, maybe I would try to go with a one and a half car garage or something like that. The agent in place, everything made sense. I, I really uh, enjoyed the presentation, but um, I think that thirty-five is where I have to dig in my heels. That's just too much. Uh, I, I can't approve that.
To me, it's three feet from the north lot, the line, and that's, that's pretty tight.
Yeah.
But it's better than negative one.
That's true.
It's an improvement.
Yeah.
A beautiful design though, just great, you know, great design. All the, the professionals have done well. It's a little too big for me.
Yeah, and the drainage was a big thing.
Make a motion to reopen the public hearing and continue it until next month?
Sorry, say that again, Eric?
Would any of the board members be willing to reopen the public hearing and continue it until next month to allow the applicant the opportunity to address these concerns?
I mean, I'm happy to make a motion. I don't know that there's really anything, at least for me personally, that can get me to go with a thirty-five percent.
Well, I'm wondering if maybe like what Eric's saying is maybe some of our comments, if they can reduce that lot coverage size by, you know, like what Bob said, a one and a half car garage maybe and move some of the components in there or, you know, I think that's what Eric's trying to get to. Is that right, Eric?
Correct.
Okay, so what do we need? A motion?
We need a motion.
Okay, I'll, I'll uh, I'll start the ball rolling.
We have a motion from Bob to reopen the application. Do we have a second?
And to continue it to next month?
Yeah, or whenever they want to give us a revised plan, yeah. Or I guess, I mean, they don't have to revise their plan. They could come back and give the same presentation. Once it's reopened, they can say whatever they want to say, but.
Great, okay.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
We have one nay.
Hey.
Of course, it's Dave. Mister, Mister Personality over there.
Careful.
We're going to go to forty-nine sixty-three Waters Edge. Anyone want to start us off on this?
Yeah, I'll start off. The, the um, this variance uh, is uh, is pretty close to um, uh, textbook case. I, when I was doing my training, there was a case that was very, very similar to this where people did their due diligence with ordinance. Uh, everything was fine, but then you have something like this easement or right-of-way and that's the reason we need uh, to uh, look at variances, why, why they exist.
I personally don't have any issue with it. I think that they'd be making a huge improvement on it. And I think that for our own, you know, the property is unique with just like what Bob was saying with the easement. And also the right-of-way, the, the private road having to be, you know, counted as lot coverage. I mean, that's kind of a, yeah, it's, that's a very unique parcel. So I, I have no issue with, I, I like the new design.
I do too. And just, you know, to relate it to the application, we were just looking at, um, you know, forty-four point five percent would be way beyond what I would ever consider. But this one has that really unique circumstance that there is additional land there that's not buildable. But by what I view as maybe an acronym in the code is still included in the calculations. It's, to me, it's odd.
Right. Well, and it's, I mean, we're talking about an eighteen hundred square foot house. I mean, that's, that's, you know, really not, we're not talking excessive either, you know? It would be a different story if it was, I, I think if it was excessive in size, but.
And you take out the easement area, as Brennan was saying, the building coverage is essentially no variance needed and the lot coverage, it reduces it down to only a five percent variance request, which is in line with what we've done before in other neighborhoods.
Right. And they're pulling it back, which is actually favorable for the neighbors as well, I would assume.
All right, why don't you call this one, Eric?
Okay, for the applicant Mark's Engineering, representing Larry Wurges at uh, four nine six three Waters Edge Drive. The applicant is requesting the following area variances. One, lot coverage of forty-four point, excuse me, forty-four point five percent when thirty percent is the maximum. Two, building coverage of twenty-five point one percent when twenty percent is the maximum. And three, front setback of thirty-five feet when fifty-five feet is the minimum required. Shall the applicant be granted a fourteen point five percent lot coverage variance, a five point one percent building coverage variance, and a twenty-foot front setback variance? I should also note, this did receive the automatic denial from Ontario County Planning Board. I don't know if that changes your calculus at all, um, but, so it's there. Would you like me to continue with the roll?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, Bob?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
And Terrence?
Yes.
Great.
All right, um, let's go through some reasons, findings and conditions. So the board's decision is based on descriptions and drawings provided um, at the public hearing held on the nineteenth of May and on other dates as provided by the development office. The board is determined that benefit to, to the applicant does outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood or the community. Therefore, the variance is granted. The board's decision is based on the facts presented during the public hearing and the following specific findings. First is that the grain, the variance is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood and will not change the character of the neighborhood. and will not change the character of the neighborhood. The lot is subject to a easement on the western boundary that artificially inflates the lot coverage and building coverage numbers. And when taken into consideration, would put the requested variance in line with similar variances granted along the lake. The grain, the variance will not have an adverse effect on the property or the neighbor. The home is being pulled further back from Canadega Lake, thus improving the view sheds of neighboring parcels. And then in terms of conditions, we'll put the standard conditions for this board, which are that the variance is specific to the most recent plans submitted to the board. And any change in the plan will validate the variance. And the variance is conditioned on building permits being issued within one year of the date the variance is granted. Failure to obtain building permits within one year shall invalidate the variance. Any other findings or conditions that anyone would like to add?
Yeah, I think I have this right. We could say that the reason for the variance request was not self-created.
Absolutely.
And I think that's worth.
So we'll add that in. All right, final application is. Or sorry, go ahead.
So thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. 4959 Island Beach Drive. This is the one that Anthony was just presenting to us where they're moving the property three feet to the north. I have no, no qualms or concerns with this. I think it's a good improvement and will make the property more palatable to both the owner and the neighbor to the south.
This is just a tilt, right? The same plan, everything is?
Yeah, I wouldn't even necessarily call it tilt. I think they're keeping the directional aspects towards the lake. They're just shifting the whole thing north.
Okay.
Yeah, we approved the tilt the last time.
Yeah.
Okay, right.
Yep.
Yeah.
One tilt.
Yeah. It's still tilted.
Anyone have a concern with this one? No? Okay, why don't you call it?
All right, for Vidalia Associates, representing Richard and Kimberly Gray at 4959 Island View Drive. The applicant is requesting an area variance for a 10.8-foot front setback when 50 feet is required. Shall the applicant be granted a 39.2-feet front setback area variance? Bob?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
And Terrence?
Yes.
I feel like it might help to look at the, everything from last year.
Yep.
So we can add, do you want to add the same reasons and conditions obviously as last year, except with a date on the most recent plan for the conditions?
Yeah, I'm trying to pull that up here. Okay, our decision sheets. I would just add in one statement on the reasons, conditions, Eric, that the board has determined that the northward shift of the property will improve the property by increasing the, the distance between that, between the home on the property and the property to the south. There's something like that to give it a little bit of extra. All right, well, with that, we're done with our public hearing portion. We'll go into board business. Eric, do we have any requests for rehearing?
Oh, we do not.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes from April 21st with the, the changes that were recommended by Eric on the first draft.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any nays? Okay, the minutes are approved. What do we have coming up in June?
All right, pulling that up right now?
While you're getting that, Chip, I'm unfortunately going to be out of town in June.
All right, make note of that.
At least I'm 80%. There's a chance, we're still finalizing schedules, but it's my mother-in-law's 70th birthday. We're going to visit her and I don't think I'll be back until the 17th.
With that, we'll have to make sure that John familiarizes himself with that application for Fallbrook Park in the minutes to the point that he may be comfortable to vote.
Terrence, you can always zoom in. I don't see what the problem is. I don't see the problem at all.
I may try it. We'll see how my, how my wife views that.
I don't think Chip wants to do it. It just is enthusiasm level dropped, you know?
But if I zoom in, Chip has to zoom in the next time he goes off Galvante to Frank.
Yeah, Chip.
All right, go ahead, Eric.
All right, we have an application on Otisiana Point for a front setback variance. This is a private drive and anyone added attached garage.
Another shed?
I wouldn't call it a shed. And then the Summer Haze application is related to that project. They actually made an application for planning and site, excuse me, planning and zoning approval for the actual construction of a house. They rearranged how the lot lines were to be adjusted to where it didn't need a variance. Essentially, the lot in the south doesn't lose anything. But obviously they're going to need variances for the development of that home, front setback, rear setback and all that good stuff. So it's a relatively light one. You got those two and then I guess a continued one from tonight, assuming that they get us revised materials in time. Which, again, is 10 days prior to the meeting.
The one for tonight that we continued, does that need a super majority?
No.
Okay. It surprised me that the county hadn't turned it down like they do everything else.
I guess they only do it if there's multiple variance requests and if the variance requests relate to lakeside setback, lot coverage, which this is building coverage, and side yard setbacks, I think was the other one.
Sometimes the flood plain, yeah, it seems to be a big, or maybe I'm, maybe I'm mixed up, but I, we've had some issues with how close we are to the flood plain. We're the high watermark. I'm getting mixed up with my descriptions. Must be I'm burned out. I'm, all my intensity is gone.
Guy behind you is burning out.
But that's it for next month.
Hey, thanks, Eric. Anything else from anyone on the board?
Bob, you want to update everybody on the ordinance committee?
I don't, I don't know if we have that much to, there's nothing that's pending. Eric, I was just thinking that we're, we were talking about delivery in a bundle when we're proposing to the, to the town board. You might want to mention that as a, as a new strategy.
So because of the, the budget changes, the town is trying to reduce the number of local laws, not to say the number of changes, but the number of actual local laws passed because each time they pass one, it's pretty expensive. So they want to make a number of changes at one point with one local law. So essentially we'll be attempting to build up a queue of changes and then reviewing it, passing them directly out. And then, the last meeting, we've kind of touched on the ones that you guys have seen before, lighting, RLD, the pool stuff, manufactured home regulations, which is a relatively minimal change, just to come into conformance with HUD regulations. And then we got the ball rolling on revising off-street parking requirements. That will continue that discussion on June 1st, our next meeting. But you're all welcome to join. It will happen by Zoom.
All right, great. Well, I make a motion that we adjourn at 8:12. Do we have a second?
I second.
All right, we are adjourned then. Thanks, everyone, and we'll reconvene in a month.
Eric, have a good one. Smile, Dave.